When I grew up here, one of my biggest hopes was that I could stay here. As we grew up here, everybody was able to afford a home. It's a very neat community. People took care of each other. The churches helped take care of each other. Everybody pretty well knew each other to speak of. I want the same thing for everybody that's here now. I want the same thing for my children. I would love them to be able to afford to rent, afford to buy without assistance. I want to make sure that Bentonville remains a community for everybody.
You're listening to The Underview, an exploration in the shaping of our place. My name is Mike Rush and we're back with our series of bonus episodes related to the upcoming city and state elections. Throughout the course of all of these conversations of The Underview, we've had an opportunity to dig deep in what is the state of Northwest Arkansas? What are its opportunities and what are its challenges? And now, we enter a season of deciding who will lead our community. We have the incredible privilege of deciding together who will be elected and ask to meet our community's challenges and take advantage of its opportunities. And as you've seen, this decision of who our elected leaders are, it really matters. So the episode ahead is an opportunity to hear directly from one of the candidates seeking public office, to hear his beliefs and values and why he thinks that he should be entrusted with one of our most sacred responsibilities. And that's the responsibility of representing our community in the public square. So today, I have the opportunity to speak with current Bentonville Council member for Ward Three, Position Two, Bill Burkhart. Bill has been a resident of Bentonville for his entire life. He's spent the last 18 years, though, in Ward Three, which he now seeks to represent again. Bill has a deep connection to the city, having grown up and raised his own family here. He is the co-owner and operator of Burkhart Construction, where he's played a pivotal role in shaping the landscape of Bentonville for over 36 years. He has been instrumental in designing, developing, and building communities throughout the city. Bill attended Bentonville Schools and later pursued studies in architecture and business at Northwest Arkansas Community College and the University of Arkansas. He holds his licenses in real estate, insurance, financial planning, and construction. Bill was first elected to the Bentonville City Council in 2008. He has served on the Finance Committee, spearheaded the Housing Task Force, and the Animal Shelter Task Force. He's participated in various city planning initiatives, such as the Bentonville Blueprint and the Downtown Planning Committees. He has held positions such as the President of the Arkansas Home Builders Association and the Northwest Arkansas Home Builders Association. Councilmember Burkhart's complete biography is available on the episode webpage, and I'd encourage you to read that in totality. Now, before we jump into the episode, I want to express my gratitude for all the kind words and feedback regarding this bonus series of conversations about our local elections. It seems to be meeting a real need, and my hope is that it helps us make informed collective decisions about who we will elect to lead our community as we face the challenges ahead. This will be our last bonus episode focused on the 2024 elections. I've worked really hard to secure interviews with every candidate running for Bentonville City Council. However, I regret to share that Sarah Folkins, who is running against Councilmember Burkhart, has declined to participate. Originally, she and I had talked, and she agreed to sit for an interview on the same day as Councilmember Burkhart's interview. However, on that day, Sarah said she was not available, not able to reschedule, and that she would now need to decline the invitation for the interview. I asked for clarification on her decision, but was only told that her campaign manager had prioritized other activities for her. Look, I don't want to presume that anyone is obligated to sit for an interview with me. I'm always humbled when someone says yes to share a table for a conversation. I readily acknowledge that my place in all of this is small. The original intent, though, was to publish interviews only if both candidates agreed to participate. However, Councilmember Burkhart's interview had already been completed before I learned that Ms. Folkins now would not participate. I did consult with several trusted and hopefully objective individuals about whether or not to publish Councilmember Burkhart's interview without Ms. Folkins' participation. They all unanimously agreed that it was appropriate to proceed with publishing Councilmember Burkhart's interview, given the circumstances, and that Councilmember Burkhart is still a sitting member of the Bentonville City Council, and his thoughts are relevant regardless of the reelection campaign. If you've been following our previous episodes, one thing is abundantly clear: the road ahead will be challenging, to say the least. The leaders we choose in every elected position play a significant role in the shaping of our community. My hope with all of The Underview conversations is to create a space where our guests can engage in meaningful, value-based discussions about our collective future. This series is rooted in the belief that there is just too much at stake to remain uninformed about the values guiding our elected leaders' decisions on our behalf. One of the historic challenges with city council elections is that there have been no forums to hear from our candidates, to understand their goals, their vision, or their motivations for running. Every city council candidate that I've talked to has also reiterated this point, and they've been excited to have a place to share their stories and their reasons in asking you to vote for them. This transparency is crucial for the future of our city, and I've been so thankful for time with each candidate. I can confidently say that everyone that I've had a chance to sit with, they're good people running for office who want to do the best for our city, even if they disagree about exactly how to achieve that. They, like myself, believe we have more in common than we give ourselves credit for. I will keep the door open for Ms. Folkins should she reconsider. I realize that that would give her an advantage on hearing Councilmember Burkhart's interview first, and Councilmember Burkhart is aware of that possibility, and he emphasized that it's more important for everyone to hear from both candidates, regardless of whether Ms. Folkins listens to his interview first or not. I truly believe that these city council conversations are critical because their collective roles as a city council are just as important as that of the mayor. All right, it's a lot to cover today, but I want to remind you that this is an exploration of how we shape our community. It seeks to foster a collective understanding about our beliefs for ourselves and our place, something that I've referred to as our communal theology of place, which serves as the foundation for building a shared and hopeful future. Let's get started. My conversation with Councilmember Burkhart is rich, and so I hope you enjoy it. Bill, good morning. It's great to share a table with you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for accepting the invitation to sit and have a conversation with me about the state of Bentonville.
Good morning, Mike, and I appreciate you having me here. I look forward to our conversation.
Let's start with your background. I'd love to understand, what would you want people to know about you as you seek reelection to the city council?
You know, thank you, Mike. I think the key is my family. I've been married for 30 years. I have two children, and I have two grandchildren. Most important thing in my life, I am Christian-based in all of my philosophies. I have worked here and grown up here my entire adult life. I grew up here as a child, and my kids went to school here, and hopefully my grandkids will as well. I come from a background of business, finance. I've been owning my own company now for 38 years. I worked with my father before that. Prior to that, I was in finance with Dean Witter, and prior to that, I was selling lots for Cooper when I got out of school. So I've spent my entire life trying to make payroll, make good jobs, trying to get through all the recessions, all of the booms and the busts, and make sure that we provide good jobs and employment. And it's all been here in Bentonville. All the communities that we've developed, all of the jobs that we've provided and created, it's all been about the family. It's been about the traditions that I grew up in and still have. It's all about my father's legacy, my legacy, my children's legacy, and Bentonville's legacy. It all really comes down to my entire life has been evolved around Bentonville and how to make it successful, not just for our own family, but for others.
As we look at really the environment that we're in today, you have a very long view of what has happened in the city. And I'd love to understand, how would you characterize where we are today as a city in this kind of cultural moment, as we look ahead for the next four years?
I take, I appreciate you thinking. I take a longer-term view. I actually look longer, a little longer than four years, but I'll give you my perspective as it exists. We are a very fortunate community that's thriving and growing, and it's due to everybody, not just the individuals that live here, the companies, the nonprofits, the corporations. We've all come together to create something here that is so unusual. And to be able to have the lifestyle and the quality of life while we're doing this is something that I don't think you find very often. We have great jobs. We have some of the smartest people around, from around the world here. We have people that have grown up here, contributing to all these successes. And we have traditions and values that are brought us here, where people wave and open the door for you, and people show up two days later, they're comfortable. So all of this together now is remembering the old, remembering the traditions and values, understanding why people fall in love with this place over a couple of days when they get here, understanding the business needs, the citizens' needs, and the capital and infrastructure needs to maintain this. The educational system, the choices that we have there, this all comes together to create an environment that is something that is unique, the quality of life that we have here. All of that together said is second to none, in my opinion. Of course, I'm from here, and I drink the Kool-Aid often, I'm sorry. But where we stand right now is there's two paths, in my mind. One is we embrace it. We focus on, from the city side, we focus on our infrastructure. We focus on the needs, not just today, but four years, 10 years, 30 years. We understand what's coming. We can't stick our head in the sand, assuming that the population isn't going to be what has been suggested, and we have to plan for that. Along with that, as we get a diversity of people here, we have to embrace that diversity. We have to embrace that culture, while we also recognize and keep involved those that have built such a beautiful place before everybody got here. I benefit of growing up here, so as I see people coming, what I want them to do is still feel as comfortable as I did when I was here, when everybody got along. Everybody, it was a pretty neat community back then, and for those that weren't here, it's a poor area. People started working at the distribution center thereafter, and it grew from there, but we all took care of each other, similar to what happened during the tornado. And I want to see that continue.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I love your perspective as a city council member. How do you view that role on the city council in terms of the initiatives and how you work to meet the challenges and the opportunities of the city?
I look at it not just as a family member, as a businessman. Anything in my business, I have to plan years in advance. Finding projects, the time that actually anybody actually hears from it, it's six, seven years before it actually moves somebody in. City's the same way. So the initiatives that we're starting now, or need to start now, are things that are, we have to have completed in seven, 10, 20 years. Nothing that we do today solves it today. So I look at the initiatives that we have as to get out in front of what we know to be coming, the increase in jobs, 5% to 6% increase in jobs. That's going to require all of the above, infrastructure, beginning with housing. And so, as we try to meet our challenges, so to speak, and we'll get into that here in a little in the future of this conversation, but I look at it as a perspective as how can I plan for that for the citizens? And how can I use my problem-solving skills and my business knowledge to move those challenges, move the, solve the problem, to solve the problems, and to offer suggestions and offer paths to fix those challenges? And that has been my goal since I got on the council. There were things that weren't being done, so I decided to run for, against an incumbent and run for office in '08. And since that very moment, I've been doing my very best to keep us out in front and bring up the challenges that I see that are coming, whether they're on the horizon of everybody else or not.
I'm curious, because you've served on the city council for 16 years now. How has your perspective of that role evolved over the past 16 years?
Honestly, I think that since I have been involved in so long, I have such a knowledge depth of the city workings, particularly the finance is really where I focus on, the finance and the budgets. And I have, because of that knowledge and infrastructure, sewer water, it's what I do for a living, is every, really 90% of what the city does, I do for a living. And for almost 40 years now, so it brings an insight to the council, and my hope is, and over the years, I think I've developed a leadership role in the council. I bring a knowledge of finance that, as we look at some of these challenges that we have, that I can offer a different perspective than just today's, whether they're listened to all the time or not. And I can bring a, an element to the council. One is a native, one is growing up here, but also one that provides jobs and makes payroll and see the citizens every day, blue collar, white collar, and everywhere in between. I think my work ethic also helps. But I see my role in the future as trying to bring my expertise, as well as other stakeholders, in building coalitions to solve problems. We don't always have that, and I think it's important, certainly now, that we build coalitions of all stakeholders, because we're going to need our partners. We're going to get into the infrastructure here soon, but without building those partnerships and coalitions, we're not going to be able to meet our needs. That's not saying I'm concerned, it's just simply saying that all hands on deck in this particular case, and over the next, as our population expands, it's going to absolutely be necessary. And I see reason in being calm. One thing I do in my business is I, all things start to go crazy, somebody has to stand there and stand in the lens of the tornado and just be calm and direct traffic and say, "It's okay." And it is okay. It's actually fantastic here. Yes, you hear me at the council often talk about our challenges, but that's because I'm concerned, and I want to make sure that those that come after me have all the benefits that I had.
So you've announced your candidacy to run for reelection. I'd love to understand why.
It's challenging, obviously, as long as I've been on it in my services before that, as State President of Home Builders Association and other associations before that. I've spent a lot of time of trying to help constituents. We're not finished. As a matter of fact, I would say that my experience right now is needed more than ever. We have, we just started the Finance Committee, and I'm pleased to be on that. We're working through challenges with capital improvement plans that we've not had since 16, consolidated capital improvement plans and cash flows. And so, I'm working through that with our colleagues, my colleagues and staff. This is a, not the time to quit. This is the time, as hard as sometimes, I think that, boy, as I just turned 40, 59, and I'd like to be 49, I'm sorry.
You could be 49 today.
Yeah, I'll be 49 today, yeah, with the grandkids and all. But I told my wife and my family and my businesses, my employees, that this isn't the time to stop. This is the time that I need to double down. This is the time that I need to fully engage, ask the hard questions, use my experience in finance and infrastructure to help bridge the gap of understanding to what we have now and what we're going to need, and how do I help to do that? So this election is a little bit different than the others. I think my experience matters, and my knowledge matters, my history in business matters. And this is a critical time. If we don't start some of these things now, it could have disastrous consequences for business, for citizens, infrastructure, and across the board. We have a, we have an opportunity not to turn into some cities that we go to study. And we need to make sure that we don't make the same mistakes. I've studied it. I've been there. I've looked at what were the good and the bad of a lot of the cities that had high growth like us. We just don't need to duplicate it, and we don't have to. We have time, and we have a clean slate to speak of, whether it looks like it or not. So we have some real opportunity here, and I think wonderful things ahead of us, and I want to be part of that and help direct that.
Yeah, you, I think you've talked about this a little bit, but maybe just to overtly ask you, what is your vision for the city of Bentonville?
Vision's a strong word. My hope, when I grew up here, one of my biggest hopes was that I could stay here. For a while there, that wasn't possible. As we grew up here, everybody was able to afford a home. It's a very neat community. People took care of each other. The churches helped take care of each other. Everybody pretty well knew each other to speak of. I want the same thing for everybody that's here now. I want the same thing for my children. I would love them to be able to afford to rent, afford to buy without assistance. There's a lot of people that aren't able to assist their children like I can. We have to acknowledge that. There's a lot of people here that have abilities to help that situation, half don't. And first, I want to make sure that Bentonville remains a community for everybody. That's the way it was when I grew up. It didn't matter what you had or what you don't have. It was, you're a part of this, and that's all that's necessary. But we're going to make sure that there was enough going on, and people did a diversity of all different businesses, all different housing, but everybody could live here if they wanted to. They could find a job. Back then, it wasn't the best, but that solved. We have the best jobs in the world here, if you want one. I guess my hope for Bentonville is continue the pinnacle of business that we have here, the startups that we have here, creating business, the entrepreneurial ship that we've had since I grew up here. It's everybody picking up their businesses by their boots, or making it on their own, or working with locals to, or their friends to create something new. That entrepreneurial spirit, I think, is really well entrenched here, and I want to see that continue. I want to see jobs continue to grow. We have great jobs here. We'll probably continue at 5% to 6% for job growth rate. I want to make sure that people can have what they want. If they want the community and quality of life that we have here, that's what we're striving for. It's very important to have that. We want a diversity in cultures. We want a diversity in people. We want it, we want the, what I didn't have. We had to go places to see art. We had to go places to eat. We had to go places to really do anything. Here it is. My kids don't have to go anywhere, and I can't wait for my grandchildren. They're three and two. What I want is for them to have the most opportunity in this city than anywhere in the world, because I don't want them to leave. And I just want to do my very best that it stays that way, to where those that we love and the community that we love has a quality of life, opportunity for everybody, and a climate that encourages investment and entrepreneurial ship, and keeps our values that I hold so dear, both in my Christian faith and also in the town that I was raised in.
Bill, that sounds like, yeah, it sounds like an amusing place to be. And I'm curious, your perspective in many ways, and I'm probably biased in this, but it feels like Bentonville is really in a position of leadership within our region as well, too. And I'm really curious, your perspective as a city council member today, how do you view Bentonville's role within the broader region of Northwest Arkansas?
Our role in Bentonville first goes to the citizens, but it's broader than that. We have opportunity to be a leader, not just in what we have available or what we can offer, the pretty things that you see. We're, we should be a leader in thought as well. We were the first to do many things, whether they've been implemented or not. We were the Housing Task Force. That was several years ago. It was the forefront of really a city tackling something like that, and I introduced that resolution to start that. Others have taken a lot of that information, started their own sense, and actually implemented faster than we have. Leadership isn't just coming up with an idea, though. It is implementing it, seeing it through. And so, our role as a leader, we need to, ideas are great, and Lord knows, I probably have more than I should share with the council half the time, but we have a leadership role and an opportunity to really be a model. And I talk to sometimes about housing and other things that we do, creating a cookbook or creating something that's duplicatable. And so, as I try to problem solve through all the different task force, and I won't go through all the different groups I've been a part of, the goal is to, is when you problem solve, that you lay out a path for others to follow. And so, leadership also does that. It not only leads your own community and works with the coalition stakeholders that we have available. You have to step out of the box, other than what you typically have done, though, to accomplish that. But you also need to show a path on how you got there and what your plan is in the future. And I hope that anything that we do that is successful, that we can be an incubator for things that could happen across the state or nationally. Our NITE program that I was on the Genesis Committee was a similar thing. Nobody had done that before. There's a lot of firsts in Bentonville, and we need to continue that, but continue it because it's good for Bentonville, not just for the sake of first. And create a pathway for those that can duplicate it and work with the state and others to see what we're doing here, understand the engine that we are of the state, because not only are we leading in what we do in the business, we are a major financial engine of the state. And there are discussions that can be made that I hope we continue, that the more you feed this engine from the state level in our raw infrastructure, the better off the state and this region is. And so, I encourage those discussions as well, to, as a leader and an economic driver of the state, one of those, that we work with the state to try to bring in more funds so that engine can continue to produce, because right now, we're lacking in infrastructure, and we could use some help.
All this growth comes with challenges, which you know all too well. And the Walton Family Foundation recently released a quality of life study identifying some of the top challenges as affordable housing, transportation, infrastructure, as some of the things we're dealing with as a, as a city, as a region. And I'd love to know, do you see those as the challenges for our city, or are there other things that we should be focused on?
There is very little that is more important than what you've just described. Every individual that wants to live in Bentonville or lives in Bentonville, it starts with shelter. There isn't any other need for infrastructure unless somebody's demanding it. That means living here. Everybody needs a shelter they can afford. That's not happening right now. It's been a decade, really, since, since you had a broad, diverse housing options that was available to everybody. As we continue to try to grow that housing stock, supply, demand, it's simple, there's just not enough supply to handle the demand. When you look at the needs of housing, I want to put it as simple as I can for those that are listening. We have a 5% or 6% growth rate in jobs. We're only hooking up a little less than 3.5% in utilities. So that means of that job growth that we have in the city of Bentonville, little less than half can't live here. It's pretty simple. You have 5.5%, 6% growth in jobs, you're only hooking up 3.5% in utilities. Where are the others going? Most of her going to the greenfields or other cities surrounding us. That's not good for us. The infrastructure it takes to build the capacity in transportation, build the capacity extended of utilities that aren't existing currently, it costs us four to five times more to build that infrastructure, to bring everybody in, than if we could just solve our housing policy locally, to where we can have more diversity of housing here. Infrastructure. Infrastructure is woefully behind. If you look back on the public record, I had been for over a decade asking both the city council administration while I was on the council to please implement set-asides at the rate of depreciation minimum of a water, wastewater, streets, and so forth. None has been put back. It's been a concern of mine. I mentioned it even as early as last year. Why don't we put money away for sewer and water? And simple answers were, well, we don't know how much. I used an example, I don't know how much it's going to cost to replace my ruche, but sooner or later, I'm going to have to replace it. And I better be saving money, because it's hard to come up with it when you really need it. We're there. We have to come up with it now. Our infrastructure demand over the next 10 years, not including 20, 30 years, 10 years is over $600 million. That's not funded. That's a lot of money that we're working with now. We have a brilliant staff. We have a good finance director. It's really nice to have it. So we're looking at how we're going to capital stack this and how we're going to raise the funds. It's going to have to be broader than just traditional funding that you get from, for a city. We're going to have to really think this one through, and it's not, the longer we delay these improvements, the worse this gets. For instance, is there a new road on the map right now? A brand-new road that's not an extension? No. How are we going to handle another 100,000 people driving into town? Back to that reference earlier, that if we continue moving 3% of our growth, job growth back out of town, we have an influence of 40, 50,000 people a day now. job growth back out of town, we have an influence of 40, 50,000 people a day now? Wait till that's 120,000, because we don't have any solutions, housing solutions. It's going to be impossible. Trying to see what's under the water from the iceberg, they're all good challenges to have, but what I'm trying to recognize is the rest of that iceberg and know that it's there and use our forecasting skills, use my experience, my understanding, as well as staff's and, and the finance director and others, and stakeholders' expertise that they have here in town. We have some of the most brilliant people here in town. We need to be taking advantage of their knowledge, whether it's finance, whether it's infrastructure, and pull all these people together and make sure it works. But the housing and infrastructure challenge that we have in front of us, which all is about quality of life. If all walks of life can't live here, this is just a club. We don't need a Bentonville club. We need a Bentonville community for everybody. So whatever the answer is, when I, and I have some ideas for solutions, we best get busy. Because we have lag behind on infrastructure reimbursement and maintenance and upkeep and housing, as well as other things, so long now, it's a serious situation. It's not unachievable. We can do it. It just, we have to focus on it. And it hasn't been a focus today. It has been a mod, but not in general.
But maybe let's dig into the housing a little bit. This is your area of expertise from a professional standpoint, but given your tenure on city council, too, these issues continue to come in front of you. A balanced growth, the need for more housing, the need for affordable housing, the need for neighborhood preservation. I'm curious your perspective within the housing conversation. How do you balance those three things, which I assume should be working together, but sometimes in the decisions that are in front of you, they may be a little bit more difficult sometimes to navigate through about how do we balance these things?
It's a good question. It's the most difficult one that I face often. I want to get back to the housing in general. My opening discussion about making sure that there was a place for everybody, shelter is the main thing. We won't have citizens if we don't have shelter. And we have current citizens that we have to keep and be mindful of. When I grew up here, there were 6,000 people. So everybody to me is a newcomer. All the growth has happened since I was a child. And so we found room for them. And while there were challenges along the way, there's not a single person that I know of that they've lost property value due to anything that went around them. It allowed their kids to live around them and allowed their grandparents to be on a fixed income, to be able to live in a home that's not expensive. When I look at the challenges that we have in housing today, that, for me, that's my driver. That's my goal is that when I hear, I went over to the high school recently and I've getting an Ignite Program, it's a policy side in urban planning. You know what their biggest concern was is, I'm not going to be able to live in Bentonville. I was shocked that they had, I don't know why I'm shocked because the kids are brilliant, the curriculum's great. But it's the same thing that, that I hear at all different meetings. What am I going to do because I can't afford to live here? And then I turn around and I hear businesses tell me that I can't recruit or retain because they can't afford to live here, so I'm losing employees. And I have citizens at the same time wanting, in some cases, wanting more housing so there's affordable housing for their family and others. And then I have some that says, no, whoa, my neighborhood's fine. I don't want any change. Bentonville, recently I had a questionnaire that seemed to be all in on growth. There, so there's a second population that doesn't want anything. And I can appreciate that. And a lot of them probably are similar to me that grew up here, that enough's enough. So to answer your question point blank, I look at that we need to increase the housing in Bentonville so dramatically that when we did the housing recommendations from the Housing Task Force, it looked at how can we create a higher density overall in the city collectively? That doesn't mean an apartment building needs to go next to a historic neighborhood, some have been saying. Or we were so intrusive in our zoning that it doesn't make any sense. For instance, say for instance, a neighborhood and somebody wants to bring a high-density multifamily or a commercial that is not a mixed use or doesn't blend and flop it right down into what I would say a transition zone. You first have to look at what the zoning is. You first have to understand that, for me, zoning is very simple. You have a commercial nodes, then you expand to like a mixed-use multifamily, then you have a medium density, and then you have neighborhoods. It should blend that way as you get closer to the commercial, your density gets higher. And as it goes the opposite direction, your densities get less and less. How to incorporate densities into neighborhoods that is going to be necessary? Say for instance, in your edge, your BN2s, your edge and things like that. There are form-based and other natural codes that, or zonings that were recommended by the Housing Task Force, that you can see that while it's a higher density blending in with these neighborhoods, you don't feel it. There is foreplex, your apex, that looks like a large old box Sears kit for some of the naturally downtown bungalow styles. So there's ways that we can incorporate density without affecting the feeling of a community. And so my hope over the next year or two or five is to show how that can be done and blended within this transition zone. Once you get out of that transition zone, I don't really see a lot of that conversation going on. It's really those that are close to downtown, as you see downtown growing out. There is some pushback along corridors and arteries, even on 12 and 102 and things like that, pushing back from that commercial areas into the neighborhoods. That is probably to be expected. Those are the only places for the, for the commercial areas and you're going to bring density around that. I do hope that we move to more of a nodal. What I mean by that for the audience, if you can think of within about two miles or a mile and a half of any neighborhood to speak of, you have a commercial area, you have a commercial services area. And in that is your basic necessities is some shopping and then you'll have higher density around that and expanding from there. It does a couple of things. So if we could spread out just from the square in the downtown, it creates multiple economic impact areas. It creates commercial nodes for people not to have to drive downtown. So it, it helps our transportation grid. And then within that, if you work within the housing to where you create a zone of commercial and higher density and lower density, then your public transportation can work because you have a higher density of population around these areas to be able to pick up and transport, whether you're picking up, using that employment base or that, that density of citizens base to transfer to the employment base. If we can get to that point, our traffic is less congested, our neighborhoods work much better, they have services all around them, and our public transportation, in this particular case example, would be busing, works much better. And so I'm looking forward to broaden the conversation of getting the commercial nodes set up as well as our transportation grid. And with that, because if we can do the nodals like we did the bikes and trails, we have a bike and trailer park within a mile and a half of every community now. If we could do a similar with nodes of commercial and residential higher density, then less would have to be necessary throughout the downtown area, because now you have employment bases outside of that. And I hope I've answered your question of my thoughts on how I think these things through. But the transition's going to be a complicated subject matter. It's going to be based on every single community as we move in neighborhood by neighborhood. What I want to make sure is that the city does their job. Recently, we had something that a higher density was going into a neighborhood area. And when you look at it, there wasn't any infrastructure. Now, that didn't mean that the developer did anything wrong or there wasn't any problems with drainage or anything like that. It just simply meant the neighborhood's not prepared. The streets aren't aligned, they're not wide, there's no ditches, there's no drainage, everything's blocked. There just isn't an infrastructure outside of that particular piece of property that could handle it. We should be out in front of that. We should be making sure, and I have asked for decades to focus on sidewalks and drainage downtown every year, and we just seem to be coming back to it piece by piece. So I encourage us to focus in. When you see somebody handicapped walking downtown and they're skipping from sidewalk to sidewalk, because the city doesn't complete them. I think it's ridiculous. Yes, developers pay for all their infrastructure, but if there's a piece between this job, this project and that project that's on a major corridor, we should finish the sidewalk. You see it all the time. So I think it's a multi-pronged approach between the city, working with the neighbors. We also have to understand that fear is a motivator. We have to do a better job, not that people don't understand what they're hearing. We have to do a better job of providing information to relieve those fears. My entire life, every time I've done a project, I've, I've built affordable housing most of my life. And that's all private money, it's my money. I don't hit anything else. I've worked hard for that. Every time I've done a neighborhood, somebody said, not in my backyard, or that this is going to bring my values down, or this is going to be horrible. Since 1988, our first little affordable subdivision, first zero lot line in Bentonville over on Third Street, that was always said and has never been the case. We want to make sure that you bring neighborhoods in the conversation. If I was a developer, I would go in and come into the neighborhood before I go to the city and I would say, here's what I'm thinking. I'd like your buy-in. What can I do for you to help this be more palatable for your neighborhood, whether I had buy right or not? And, and try to get that compromise or get that buy-in before it gets too far along. We also have to have a revised plan. We have a community plan that everybody bought in from 15 to 18. We didn't adopt it till 18. It took us three years to adopt it. We had thousands of people involved in that community plan. But people aren't, some people didn't become a part of that and they don't lack the vision of that. So we're doing a new one in Bentonville and it's going to be another community plan. We should be done soon. So I encourage everybody to be a part of that, because what has to happen is it, we have to have predictability. We have to have predictability for investors, for business and for the citizens. So if I could, if we could fix nothing else, we need to fix our predictability for everybody involved. So when we finish with this plan, that everybody's had a chance to view it, we have a good, clear majority mandate that everybody's accepted this, and then put that into working documents that allows it to be predictable for not just the landowners or the homeowners, but also for the people that are investing in our community, trying to build the much-needed housing that we have. Because the last thing we need is both the citizens and the developers and the business people not knowing what's to come. And then you're going to see complete breakdown and the lack of any development or investment, similar to this year. We only have 184 single-family starts this entire year. Now, I'm going to pause for a minute to get everybody to scope with that. You have six percent job growth, you have 60,000 people here, people moving in every day, and we have 184 permits this whole year for single-family. We have zero for multifamily through September. We have been flat or declining since 2015 in our housing starts. So while we've doubled in population, now just think about this. We've doubled in population and we have produced the same or less since 2015. Now, I know people say we, we don't need any more housing, we don't need any more apartments, but think about that statement, that the population has doubled, but our production has remained the same for 10 years. That's not sustainable, no matter what community you live in. And we're not just dealing with the inflation at the national level. We have our own here. And my goal is to not just try to find ways to bring everybody together in a coalition, both neighborhoods and homeowners and builders, developers in the city, but it's to recognize real problems and to try to solve them before the housing prices and the challenges that we have are unattainable to 60% of the population. I covered a lot of ground there, so focus in, focus in for me if you want.
I've got 100 more questions for you now, but we won't have 100 more. But yeah, maybe two questions on this housing conversation. Where's the disconnect in what we need to see happen and what is happening? What do we, as a, maybe a citizenship of Bentonville, what do we not understand that's allowing that disconnect to happen? I know you mentioned the Housing Task Force, Project Arrow, maybe things that need to be implemented there. Is it, you mentioned fear as well, too. I'm just curious where you think that disconnect is and getting to where we need to be in, in housing versus maybe what we have been doing?
It's hard to, it's hard to understand that. It's hard for me. I've been involved trying to get the square going again since 2098 and trying to get people living downtown to make the businesses successful and then dealing with affordable housing. Even when I was State President of the Home Builder Association, I had to go fight at the legislation, at the legislative floor as a witness to say, we need to get the impact fees under control, at least have a law that says, here's what you have to have, because all the imposition of fees and cost, that is all continued. So the disconnect for us is that it's, for me, it starts at the council level and our government level. We all need to do our homework. I spend my, what I don't spend at the office in my job, I won't go through how many hours, but then I, the amount of time that I spend working on the details of finance and understanding of different issues with the city, that's where my knowledge comes from. The, how do you get people engaged into reading all the information and trying to understand how it's all linked together? I have found it very difficult over my decades of working with the housing and, and policy and legislative affairs. So I try to simplify it as often as I can, not because people can't understand it, but they don't have time. They're not, the time that we had at the city council, very few people come and listen. So when I have those conversations, and you're more coming to the task force meetings or the groundwork meetings or the, the Build Bentonville meetings that have these discussions, but it really doesn't get out very often, the magnitude of the challenge that we have. You hear it on national news in different cities. So for me, trying to have the conversation, no matter who's in front, get off on political side, decisions are hard at the council all the time. There are some decisions that we have to make that are popular. If we're going to, no different than when I was raising my children, my decisions weren't always popular with them, but I saw their future. I see the future in a way from my standpoint of knowledge. And while it can be manageable, it's a serious challenge. So how do I link with them? I say just more conversations, more good data. And we need to find ways to bring the citizens into the conversation, more than just a Bentonville plan, because they're just trying to think about their neighbor. Just each area, which is fine, in my yard, my, my property, that's where it all starts. Bringing more people in and sharing all the information to where they can see, okay, now I'm past my yard, I'm past my neighborhood, wow, this is a big problem we're going to have or having. Relating it to people that are having children that are about to reach college. Sharing it with people your age that have parents from my past, recently it was my mother. But we all have parents that are now on fixed incomes. Where are they going to live? And it's not just an anecdote. This is real. We have a broad base of our population that has no option here, despite all our efforts. And it comes down to bringing that information, getting it in administration and our council member all on board, which we were at one point on the recommendations at the Housing Task Force. But it fell short in implementation like it always does. This won't be the first time things like this have fallen through the cracks. But we have to stay steadfast in that. It is our responsibility to stay steadfast in that. And if the implementation of, of recommendations that were passed 100% by the city council and example projects or things that are brought for this council, whether the laws have been written or not, based on the implementation, we should move forward on that if we all agreed on that. Currently, right now, we still have only enacted one or two items out of the laundry list of Arrow that we put forward. It's not enough. And to your question initially, what should we be doing? We should be showing our leadership. If everybody would show their leadership and as they did when it was easy to approve the recommendation. the recommendations, and they came back with the same being as resolute with the implementation and showed that leadership, then the citizens would see an effort by all that this is so important that we have to do something. Then A, maybe they'll believe a little more or engage in the conversation to ask their particular council member that maybe once was against, then maybe say, "Hey, I heard this, and y'all are all for this. It must be serious. Tell me more about it." But right now, we're fractured. And if you've ever tried to run a car on four rative engines, it doesn't run very well. And you'll probably end up in the shop, and it will cost you a lot more money than it should have if you'd just maintained it and looked ahead on your maintenance. We're in the same boat, and it really is our job to provide more facts, more information, and using people like yourself and others that can maybe help us explain it differently. I don't know any other way to explain it other than the economics of it. I have a unique position because I've supplied housing for seniors, I've supplied housing for brand-new families. I see it all the time. And I see those that can't afford it, can't come up with the down payments. Now you're looking at insurance through the roof and taxes through the roof. Everything that people are dealing with right now is really hurting. People are hurting right now. And when you combine that with not offering an option for their place to live, and they have to live 30 minutes out and drive into town, their cost just goes up more and more every day. And so this is something that is so serious and such a passion of mine. I hope I can do a much better job than I've done in the past, explaining the facts around the challenge that we have in front of us and why it's so important. I've just not done a good enough job, I don't think, to bring the data in a format that I think can, as you can tell by this interview, I speak too much about it. I need to make it more concise to, and try to bring more coalition partners in from the citizenry and not just the community leaders and nonprofits and others that they forecast this for a living, or the corporations around here that forecast this for a living and realize we're tens and tens of thousands in short just to supply what we're going to need to supply those businesses. But it's one word made in a critical decision to leave their corporation here and expand it. Other corporations have done the same thing. Now we have a state-of-the-art hospital going to go in, another 3,000 employees probably when all the service industries and everything else, the teaching hospital, all the things that we have here. Those are all opportunities for people to have good jobs. But you've got to be able to live here. Or if you've lived here your whole life and you need a house because you're now on a fixed income, there isn't one. Or if you're just coming out, and my kids are just coming out, and they're struggling into college and trying to make a living, where are they going to live without assistance? There isn't any. So this isn't a conversation about where it goes. It's becoming a conversation of, are we going to do it? And are we going to put the mechanisms in the city's policies and regulations to encourage housing? Or are we going to continue to impede development and construction in the city of Bentonville? And I hope we don't. Because it can get much worse. Look at Austin, look at the other places that didn't do anything and wanted to resist what was already happening. We could just say, "No more growth," and we're heading that way. I shudder to think what Bentonville will look like when we're going to pace faster than some of those other cities and we don't do what it takes now to maintain our quality of life. And that includes housing and infrastructure for everyone, not just for those that are now here that don't want anybody else. And I hate to say it that way, but if I had that point of view when I grew up there, when I first got into business, that would have been plenty. So now it's our turn. For everybody that's listening, I understand traffic and everything, and I've got solutions, I think, to help that. But the answer isn't, "Now that I'm here, we don't want you." That's not the answer. Because of what a lot of the people that you don't want, you just need to look at your own family or your friends. Half of the people can't. So it's not just others or new people. It's the people within ourselves. And that's, back to my opening statement, my goal is to make sure it's a community as it was. And that is where everybody has opportunity and housing, and we're all working together in good jobs. And without housing and infrastructure, it's just not going to happen.
I realize that housing, infrastructure, transportation, they do work together. But are there things within, as we think about infrastructure or transportation, that we need to also consider as a part of this conversation?
Well, I think the first thing is understanding that our capital improvement plan over the next 10 years is close to $600 million. We have total combined unrestricted, unencumbered of probably, I'll pick, could be off here, five or six million dollars. But like the streets, we have a net probably $4 million, $3 million available to spend. Of the $250 million in water, our total utility fund probably has 20. General fund has about $30 million total. Now, we need to keep a reserve of probably 25% of our operations. That doesn't leave a lot for the $600 million that we have to raise. And a lot of that is maintenance and repair. As you see a shift in our priorities, which I hope to do soon, it's not that we're not trying to continue all the other things that we've been doing. But now it's time to take care of what you don't see, the sewer and the water. And roads is the biggest out there. We only have $7 million in the road fund, of which $4 million, $3 million is encumbered. We have hundreds of millions of dollars worth of roads to do, besides the bond funds. We don't have any road south of 112 to move traffic out of Rainbow Curve. We need new roads. And so any road that you start today, you'll be lucky to have on board in 10 years. So there are a couple of things that need to be raised at the height of scrutiny right now and have much broader discussion. And funding the infrastructure and building that capital stack and making sure that we do that. And plan new roads and new expansions that aren't on the books at all right now and start that immediately. Because you think the traffic jams are bad. Why can't you have another 100,000 coming in if we don't solve some of the problems?
I know we've talked a lot about the challenges because they're real and they're front and center for most everyone as we consider what the future looks like. But I do want to talk about the opportunities to maybe shift gears a little bit. When you look forward, what do you see as really the opportunities that we have as a city to take advantage of today?
I'm a cup-half-full guy, so you can be in my business and not be an optimist. I think for our city, the opportunity in front of us is endless. And it sounds like a funny statement, but I don't think there's anything that a person can't do if they set their mind to it and work hard in the city of Bentonville. They can make any business. They can focus on any talent or challenge, whatever they want to do. And that's exciting to me. The entrepreneurialism that you see here in town, the startups, where else in the area, where else in the country do you have such an incubator for that? You have design excellence coming from some of the large corporations and the Walmart Foundation and all that. They're offered to encourage the best examples that are possible for our community. The future of Bentonville, I think, is so bright that it's going to continue to bring the brightest, the smartest people to our area, which only continues to encourage that. If you're a child in high school and you want to, you're concerned about this community or you hear all this talk about the challenges, those challenges exist because of the type of community we are. And it'll, they'll be solved. Because we are the type, we'll all come together to solve these. We just have to focus on what exactly it is. But if I was talking like I was to the night students the other day, "You can do anything you want here." Unlike when I grew up. If you wanted to work here, you were working in the distribution center or a fast food or place like that. You didn't have the options you have now. And this has all come about by a lot of hard work and a lot of people doing remarkable things. Bentonville will continue to be that remarkable place. We have a quality of life that I know you recognize in biking. I do a lot of planning. I do a lot of canoeing. I do a lot of basically backwoods, which I can go 10 minutes anywhere I want and enjoy all of it. So I think we make sure that we have that in the future, which we're working on every day. We just saw the Eighth Street Park, Gateway Park come in and all the land that we have going to parks and trails and we'll keep that available, like I would. Go anywhere to see nature. But we need to make sure and that the opportunities exist for anybody that wants to be a part of a company or stay home, raise their children or old-school their kids, and that everybody has all the tools that they want to do by their choice. And they have a community that encourages that, is acceptable to that, and that if you want to start something that's unique in this world and you want to put down roots or build a company, you have that opportunity here and people that can encourage you and help lead you. That's Bentonville that I've always grown up with. Now it's just so much broader and so many tools available that really we should be the beacon for so many people in so many places that says, "This is what real entrepreneurialism looks like, and this is what opportunity looks like. Despite challenges, there's nothing like it." And I will certainly do everything I can to cheat that dream alive here in Bentonville.
Bill, thank you. I think one of the things that I'm curious about, I know people come to city council and they expect you to solve all their problems, which would be great. I wish we had a place where we could go do that. But citizens have a responsibility as well, too, to be a part of what this city is becoming and is going to become. I'm really curious your perspective on what should the city expect of the citizens as far as participation and involvement into what this city is going to become?
This, the city collectively, if you want to call it an entity, the city itself needs to do a good job of encouraging people to participate, not when it's against something, but to help plan something. I keep referring back to the way things were, and it still is. It's much engaging with people in community groups and church and other things that they solve the problems within those spaces. They come together, they work through solutions, and a lot of it's helping people individually. And that, to me, that's the same way the city needs to look at building communication and building teams and volunteers and effort in getting people engaged, no different than your churches. People ask. They go out and they say, "Hey, we've got a family in trouble. I need all these volunteers today, and we're going to solve this problem." I don't think we ask like that. I think we need to, if we could be as honest as we possibly could and say, "Okay, I'm not looking for experts in this or that. I'm looking for everybody to be engaged on any different level. Here's the problem. Hey, and I'd like to get anybody that has any knowledge base around this space to please come in and help us." I would like to see, as part of the administration, the council, near war, it's not less, like the finance committee. We just started that after all this time. And I would like to see people on that finance committee from other sources, other businesses, other citizens that have expert understanding of finance sitting on that board, just like we should on, we appoint people on the planning, but there's so many other boards that are available or make some. Bringing people together, going to your community partners and engaging in them, sitting in on those conversations and bringing that, those facts that we need to share with people to those boards. People are swamped right now. We're working all the time trying to cover our debts and our cost of living and kids in school. And so really, people don't get engaged in the city unless there's something that shows up in their back door. How do we get them involved? We need to make it as easy and as simple as humanly possible. So in that one hour they may have a week that they may choose to engage in that conversation. But you're right. Our citizen involvement, with the exception of a few meetings, there's very little that come to the council. And frankly, that information, the agendas are hard to find. You'd have to know where to find them on the sheet. We only get them on a Friday. We talk about them on a Tuesday. So there's very little engagement with the citizenry on the topics that we're meeting on every week. I'd like to broaden that to where we could have actually more time to discuss it with our constituents, so we can get more input on that. But how to get people engaged? We go where they're at. We go to the churches, we go to their communities, we go to the neighborhood meetings. And I think that we need to be ambassadors, no different than the chamber is or other people are. We need to be ambassadors, not just making decisions, but sharing our knowledge that we know. There is so much information we could share during this interview, but it would go on for a day. But if we could share that individually with people that want to know about a topic and we could go where they're at, that's what we need to do. And then also use our stakeholders and our partners here to share that information out to their circles and see if they can encourage them to do the same. Daylight is best. And the more daylight and the more conversations we can have, it also would maybe reduce some of the fears of the unknown. That if people really know why you're doing something and that the result of it's not going to be their worst thought ever, then we can overcome some of these without it being a political discussion. Hope I answered your question.
You did. Bill, one of the things that I hear you talking about is the complexity of what it looks like to not only set up land for the future, but also to implement that. And that experience is very different with a city that's 60, 65,000 people versus 6,000 people. And I'm curious what you feel like is critical around the city council and the experience that is really needed to go from 60,000 people to 100,000 people within the next five to 10 years?
That's a great question. I think now more than ever that the experience that we would have on the council members and in the administration is critical to have a firm grasp on financial knowledge, on planning, on seeing problems, building coalitions, and to solve those problems and raising capital for those problems. As much as we'd like to think that we're the small town and that experience isn't necessary, I think we have to make sure that not just the experience of people taking care of their constituents, and that should always be the case, citizens are first. They also need to have the knowledge base to analyze a half a billion dollar worth of infrastructure plan. They need to make sure that our overhead stays reasonable and in line with inflation and not double inflation. So managing our finances, managing just like we do at your household or I do at my business. Knowledge of providing jobs, knowledge of running larger financial needs, understanding planning, understanding project management, infrastructure. As we're analyzing this and developments and all the other questions that come to city council, we need people that can look at that, understand it, and bring value to that conversation. I look for it a lot outside the council because that's, I think that if I have smarter people than me around me, that's better in my business and for the city. And so I'm hoping that as we move forward through this election and other elections, that we understand the complexity of the city and understand that those that are going to be making the decisions need to be able to understand that complexity, have some history in some form of that, simply to be a better steward and more physically responsible like you would in your own family or household or business.
One of the things that I ask everybody, so I'm not picking on you, and you've mentioned some of this, is, and I think it's important to articulate what our fears are, because I think that gives us, we put those on the table and maybe gives us the opportunity to think through our challenges or those things differently. So I think in the spirit of that question, I'd love to know, as we think about the cities, you're also a city council member, yeah, what are your fears for this place?
I would say, first for me is my own values go. I'm not here to dictate anybody else's values, but I want to simply share that I hope that we always are the town that the reason people stay. You and I have been here long enough to remember people coming here for three, four years and leaving, but now they're staying. And I want to- And I want to continue. My biggest fear is that we lose the values that we hold dear and also people find so endearing. I won't go into all the accounts that I have of people coming here and after their first day, they call their husband or wife and they say, we're moving here or we're staying here. And that's because of the people. And so what I don't want to lose is the value that we hold in each other. I do not want to be what I see so often in the news of that this differential between people because of class or where they come from or anything else. There's no place for that here. So I hope that people that decide to move here and those that are here, those that are here are accepting of those that have come. And those that are coming, by acknowledging and accepting those that are here, don't try to make us where you came from. Basically appreciating each other, open the door for people, wave at strangers, say hi to strangers. That's what I want to keep and that's also one of my biggest fears, that changes. The other fear that I have is that we do not take care of the things that we've talked about for the last 30, 40 minutes. The result of that is catastrophic. And so my fear is that none of what I share gains ground or people that are warning over and over again that this needs to take place. We can't seem to get across the finish line. The result of that will be really sheer chaos, no transportation, lack of infrastructure. The cost of living here will be so great that my grandchildren won't be able to be here. That's a huge fear of mine. And it's not that people don't understand. We just haven't, we haven't gone out and where they are and tell them about it. The quality of life, I spoke about just a second ago, but that's more than just people, place and thing. It's also for your person. That I, the faith is very important to me and that we always know that that faith is part of the community. We want to make sure that they always have a place at the table for our community churches, our community outreach and all the nonprofits. And then lastly, I want to make sure that Bentonville, like I mentioned before, is a place for everybody. My biggest fear is, we've done it off and on over the last several decades. I don't want Bentonville to be just a club. I don't want it to be only if you make $200,000 and above to be able to participate in a community that I grew up in. We didn't have anything, literally. Some things people don't know, I was, my family was divorced. And at the, there when I was in high school, just mom and I, after my sister moved out and things were tough, but we were able to make it. My biggest fear is those that are going through challenges or choose to a certain lifestyle, whatever it is, that this town isn't for them anymore. And that's not who we are. I know the growth is hard. I know that it's challenging to have the roads closed here and there. I expect more of it if we're ever going to get caught up. But my biggest fear is that we don't do those things and then people that should be part of this community are no longer part of it. That's my biggest fear.
One of the themes through all the conversations that we've had is this idea of community wholeness. I'd love your perspective when I use that term, wholeness. From your point of view, what does community wholeness look like?
Community wholeness to me, wholeness to me is, it's always narrowed down for me when I was young. I don't know if you've ever heard of the I am third scenario. And I don't want to get off into religion too much. God, family, friends, community. Nobody deserves to be here more than anybody else. Nobody's story is less important than anybody else's. As we city leaders move through these challenges of growth, we need to always remember that the more we can bring people together and the more that we can share those experiences as each individual has them, the more people understand each other. The last thing we need here is identity politics or anything like that. I've been a conservative my whole life. As we're talking about local politics, those values I hold dear with my conservatism will always be the case. My understanding as a person that grew up here where everybody took care of each other, that if you needed something, you'd go to your church, you'd go to your friends, you'd go to your family. It wasn't very rarely the government, it was each other. That's community wholeness. We have the people, we have the corporations, we have the nonprofits, we have the groups. There is an opportunity, there's so many people helping. And very few people are aware of all of the groups that are actually helping and building and putting their talents or the money toward building this community. I'm just thrilled to be a part of it and to watch how collectively everybody's doing something that very few in this state has ever accomplished. And so I just hope it continues and more and more of that. And I would say the good education that we have, the quality of life we have in our parks and trails, the spirit of opportunism that we have here, the opportunities that we have here and the people that we have here and the generosity of them, just like Gary the tornado. It wasn't the government, it was the people. That's togetherness. So that's what we want to maintain. I want to guide good stewardship of the financial needs of the city. I want to guide in the decisions based on my understanding and others that are around me that maybe have more understanding, better understanding than I am. I don't know everything, but I can promise that there's not a subject matter that I haven't dove into to the fullest extent before I make a decision. And that's just not the weak. That's for the last 38 years. I've been on the council a long time, but before that, I had to make these decisions on a statewide level with the State Home Group Association and local and legislatively before that on how to do affordable housing. I just want to use those talents. And I know that the community as a whole comes together to solve these problems as it always has. And I think it continuing will surprise a lot of people because the opportunities that we have if we do pull all together and we make this city for everybody, there's nobody that can touch us. And I'm so excited about that, that no matter who you are, what you do or how you feel, keep all that identity politics away from here and let me know how I can help. And that's where I'm at.
Well, council member Burkhard, thank you for your time. It's been a pleasure to sit with you and to hear your perspective. You've been serving the city for so long. And so thank you for the work that you do every day and serve the city and good luck on reelection campaign. Yeah, thanks for being here and thanks for the work that you've been doing.
I thank you for having me. It's conversations like this and more in-depth conversations that I hope everybody can have more of. And I appreciate you doing what you do. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Well, thank you to council member Burkhard for taking the time to share a table with me and for his willingness to discuss the opportunities and challenges that the city of Bentonville will face over the next four years and even longer. I continue to appreciate the unique perspectives that everybody brings to the table. And I believe at the core of each of these conversations, people really are trying to do the right thing for our city. I'm incredibly thankful to Bill for all the ways he's served our community and our region with his time and his resources. His work and focus have played a significant role in the shaping of our place today. And those efforts will continue to influence our community for years and decades to come. I encourage you to visit Bill's campaign website or Facebook to learn more about his story, the issues and initiatives that he views as necessary for the city and find some upcoming events. And I'll close again with extending an invitation to Sarah Folkins. These are the questions, this is the format. And while I realize my small place in the future of our city, I do believe our city deserves the opportunity to hear from every candidate seeking public office. And to all of those who have followed these conversations, I just want to say thank you for following along with our story. And I hope that these conversations can help inform and inspire your decision to choose the candidate that will rise to meet the challenges ahead for our community. Don't forget, early voting begins October 21st. Please go and vote. It's our highest obligation as citizens and this is our communal practice of deciding together who will be charged with our community's most sacred responsibility. We may have some additional bonus episodes before the end of the year. However, I'm spending the majority of my time now on season two, The Story of Northwest Arkansas. The conversations that I've had, the guests that I've met, the things that we're talking about, they have been incredible and I just can't wait to share those with you. I promise it's going to be an incredible story you're going to hear. So thanks again for following along and thank you for being the most significant part in the shaping of our place.